Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see such a full house. The kids always bring that out, so we're happy to have you all here tonight. Please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for whom it is founded, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Next item, please.
Next item, a roll call. Councilmember Daniels. I believe he's here.
He's in the building. He's just not here yet.
Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Zoe is absent, and Mayor Bruins.
Present. Okay.
So tonight, this meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, January 28th at 9:00 a.m., and again on Wednesday, January 30th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Okay. Council, are there any questions on the agenda?
Move approval.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, it carries. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, recognition of the recycling poster contest winners.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Bruins, rest of City Council. Most of you know me already. Portia, we have not met yet. Welcome to City Council. My name is Anna Rulon, and I'm recycling coordinator with Republic Services. But tonight, I am not here to talk about trash. I'm here to talk about art and the talented students that we have here in Citrus Heights, one of my favorite nights of the year. So every year, as you guys know, we host a poster contest, and we do this in part with the city of Citrus Heights and San Juan Unified School District. And this poster contest is for students here in Citrus Heights, as well as elsewhere in San Juan Unified School District, that want to participate. It's not mandatory. We drop off posters at all of the schools, and kids aged kindergarten to eighth grade can participate. Every year, we have a different prompt. We try to focus the prompt on something involving waste reduction, sustainability, recycling. So this year, our prompt was put plastics in their place, and we chose this prompt because, as some of you may know, there's been a lot of changes when it comes to the recycling world, and that has affected what kind of stuff we can put in the recycling bin. And one of the big changes that's happening right now is involved with plastic. So we thought it was very important that students and other residents know what plastic can do to the environment if it's not put in the proper bin, and to encourage proper separation of recycling plastics. So this contest was open to elementary, middle, and K-8 schools here in Citrus Heights. We had eight participating schools this year, and tonight, I have 13 winners. Each of these winners are going to be receiving a certificate and a $25 gift card to Barnes and Noble. And we have one grand prize winner out of those 13, who will be receiving a little bit more, and that grand prize poster, as you know, is on the front of the calendar that goes out to all 27,000 houses here in Citrus Heights. And we're also going to be recognizing the school that had the most participation with $500 that they can put towards the arts, or any after-school program, or anything that they see fit. So I'm going to be calling up each student individually, and when I call your names, students, please come up here. We will be giving you a certificate and a gift card, and we will be taking a picture with each student individually. And I ask that all the students, please stay up here until I've called all 13 winners and the winning school, so we can take one big group picture with council. So at this time, I'd like to call up my assistant, Johnny's, to help me pass some items out, and Mayor Bruins, if you'd be so kindly to come help us pass out the gift cards. And parents and families, please feel free to take pictures. We will be taking pictures as well, but if you would like to grab some for social media or to share with your friends and family, feel free to squat in the aisle and take some pictures. Maybe ride over here with Johnny's. And I believe they're in order, but I'll hand them to you, so you don't have to shuffle through them. All right. So our first school is Skycrest, and we have one winner from Skycrest, and that would be Sophia Podverchantska, 4th grade. Is Sophia here tonight? And she is not. Sad face. She'll still be receiving the $25 in her certificate. And the next school would be Grand Oaks, and we have three winners from Grand Oaks. And I had the pleasure of talking to some teachers and staff from Grand Oaks earlier out in the lobby. So we have a very supportive school staff there at Grand Oaks, and I just want to say thank you to everyone who came to support all of their talented students. So our first winner from Grand Oaks is Emmanuel Martinez in kindergarten. Not here? Okay. Darn. Oh, is he here? Emmanuel Martinez! All right, and then stand right over here, just for a couple more minutes. All right, and also from Grand Oaks, we have Adrian Gonzalez. And turn for a picture. And from Grand Oaks, our last winner is Delaney Nelson, 1st grade. And we're not supposed to have favorites, but this is one of my favorites, and if you can see, everything in the drawing is made out of plastic straws. And the next school is Woodside K-8, and we have two winners from Woodside. And our first winner is Arsham Yunessi, 7th grade. And our other winner, Tania Roman, 6th grade. Okay, and our next school is Kingswood K-8, and we have one winner from Kingswood, Elie Air Milan, 2nd grade. All right, and from Lichen K-8, we have one winner, Brayden Hunter, kindergarten. I don't like being in front of all these people either. And from Arlington Elementary, we have one winner, Camila Morales Guzman, 5th grade. And from Sylvan Middle School, we have two winners, Sayal Rain Latu, 6th grade. And our second winner from Sylvan Middle School, Angelina Mitchell, 8th grade. And our last school, Carriage Drive Elementary, we have two winners, and our first one is Leah Coleman, 3rd grade. And last, but definitely not least, our grand prize winner, whose artwork is on the cover and the month of January, is Bethany Morales, 3rd grade. And Bethany's artwork was three-dimensional. It's kind of hard to see. Now that I'm awkwardly standing in the side of all of those pictures, let's do one big group picture. Oh, I need the school, never mind. One more thing. Arlington Elementary, for the second year in a row, had the most participation, and their principal Raphael is here to receive $500. So come on up, Raphael. And now, we can take one big group picture. So you guys want to come in? Maybe we can make two lines?
I want to stand next to the smaller children. I look taller.
Down this way. Stand in front.
You guys want to join us?
Some of us may.
Okay. Put the kids in the front. Usually, we do it up by the councils.
Yeah, you should maybe back them all up that way, into the better lighting.
Okay. Okay, we're going to get you again.
Will you get the good photo?
Sorry, kids.
All right, guys, we're going to go this way.
The lighting's better back there. This way. Can we? Can I help? Is that okay? Okay. Please do. Good job, guys. Good job, good job. Okay, you guys can sit down. Thank you. Another round of applause. Just imagine how short this presentation would have been back before smartphones existed. So again, thank you so much to Citrus Heights City Council and the staff here at City Hall for judging, helping us judge. We started with hundreds and hundreds of posters and had to narrow it down to 13. And thank you to the participating elementary, K-8, and middle schools, Arlington, Carriage, Grand Oaks, Mariposa, Skycrest, Woodside, Kingswood, Lichen, and Sylvan. Thank you for doing this every single year and giving us the amazing artwork that your students create. And that is all. Are there any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for putting this on.
Of course.
Appreciate it.
We love it.
Love getting the calendar every year.
Yeah. Me too. I love going through all the posters every year.
That's the hard part.
It is the hard part, but it's really awesome when my favorite ones win, so. All right, thank you.
Okay, the next item is presentation number five, recognition of a community center volunteer.
Good evening, mayor and council members. This evening, we wanted to recognize the outstanding efforts of one of our volunteers at the community center, who has been instrumental in streamlining our processes and really saving the city a tremendous amount of money with scheduling software. On behalf of myself, Darcy, and Michelle, we would like to take the opportunity publicly to recognize Alan Pendicras for all of his efforts and his dedication to our operations on a daily basis. He does come in sometimes two and three times a week and work from home. Besides being an MS Excel spreadsheet extraordinaire, in his spare time, he enjoys spending time with his very patient wife Cathy, who also works at the police department. He is an avid bowler, a woodworker, and he loves to travel. Alan became a city volunteer in 2013. He was adamant about doing one thing and one thing only, Excel spreadsheets. He also made it very clear he did not want to answer phones, conduct tours, or take messages. All he wanted to do was spreadsheets. Of course, now he does tours, he takes calls, and he is very responsive to the public. At our initial meeting with Alan, we learned that in his former life, he had worked for Intel and managed to carve out a very special niche for himself, specifically working in Excel. We figured that we could find something to keep him occupied, and his contributions have been tremendous. He has, I'll back this up, began volunteering, started proving existing Excel spreadsheets for us. Within the last two years, it was apparent that our original reservation software, which we had modified based upon programming that was designed for the San Jose Airport in 2010, was no longer capable of functioning in the capacity that we needed. Fast forward to last year, the IT department consistently looked for off-the-shelf software for us to use, and they were just not successful in finding something that we could actually utilize with all the different resources that we have at the center. Alan, of course, created a spreadsheet to track reservations. He's streamlined the entire process. What took multiple Microsoft applications is now condensed down to two sheets, and these sheets have saved us a valuable amount of time and energy and resources. The noteworthy things, the quote sheet that now volunteers and staff use on a daily basis for walk-ins to create the entire breakdown of an event, deposit return requests, tracking staff availability, work hours, and other facility resources, managing and updating staff schedules and monthly events, and maintaining the entire event security schedule as well. So with that, we'd like to have Alan come forward, and we just want to say thank you very much, Alan, for everything that you've done and your dedication to us, and we so very much appreciate it.
This is working? Okay. I just want to personally thank you as well, because I am a person who uses the community center once a month regularly, and your efficiencies have helped the staff and the organizations that I represent get through the process much more quickly, and we just are so grateful for your talents and your willingness. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Quick picture. Did you get it?
The next item, presentation number six, is a presentation by Dignity Health regarding the Mercy San Juan Medical Center and an update on the medical office building project.
Honorable mayor, council members, how are you this evening? My name is Michael Corpil, and I am the president at Mercy San Juan Medical Center. It is an honor and a privilege to be here, so thank you, Chris, for the invitation to come and present a little bit about Mercy San Juan. I also have with me Dr. Jill Walsh, who I think many of you know, as well as Kirk Davis, who are with the Dignity Health Medical Foundation and Mercy Medical Group, to give us an update on the Greenback Medical Office Building that you see just being built just down the road. But let me take a minute just to talk a little bit about Mercy San Juan. I don't know how many of you were here in 1967, but that is when Mercy San Juan was built, a very humble beginning in the middle of Goat Field, believe it or not, where Mercy San Juan started its ministry as a hospital, the vision of the Sisters of Mercy, who saw a need to deliver health care in this growing part of Sacramento. Fast forward to today, Mercy San Juan is now a major nationally recognized medical center for the care that we provide. I would like to start off my presentation with a video that recognizes all of the work that was done at Mercy San Juan with our 50th anniversary.
Legacy is about what we inherit, but also legacy is about what we pass on. Our people become steeped in those values, and that spirit of what the early sisters did in terms of their generosity, their courage, their absolute determination, that gets passed on.
It was really an exciting time, and the sisters were very proud that Mercy San Juan was going to stand on its own two feet and be its own entity.
As long as we continually strive to look for what is needed in the community and to meet that need, that spirit will never go away.
The medical center has been here for the community for 50 years, and it continues to get better and continues to care for people the way it cared for me.
5% of all babies are born premature, and about 10% of all babies require some degree of support after delivery. We are in the process of putting together a plan to expand our NICU to a 40-bed NICU in the new tower here at Mercy San Juan.
What a gem this is. What a unique opportunity to have your money put to really good use.
We've got an 18-year-old.
The whole hospital raises up its skill level when you're a trauma center. The operating room, the recovery room, the ER, the hospital, the blood bank, all have to elevate their game, because it's like a game of hot potato. All of a sudden, you have to do it, and you have to do it quick.
Dignity Health, specifically focusing at Mercy San Juan, has developed a base, or a foundation, hospital that does literally all of the thoracic oncologic surgery in the greater Sacramento service area.
I was definitely a lucky guy to find Dr. Perna and the support staff, because I'm not sure I would have the quality of life or be where I am today without this institution.
Every day, every patient that we encounter, we display dignity, and we work together through collaboration. We strive for excellence, and we're good stewards with our resources.
Everybody worked together as a team. Everybody knew what they were doing, they knew what needed to be done, and the care was phenomenal.
As we continue to become more comprehensive and reach higher levels of excellence, we continue to bring in more physician talent, more nursing talent, more technical expertise, and it's that combination of factors, that team, so to speak, that really differentiates us and separates this medical center from all the other medical centers in the community.
50 years from now, health care will look different. However, that doesn't mean that it changes who Mercy San Juan is for this community. It will just change with the times to provide the appropriate care.
50 years ago, the hospital was built in response to the need of the time, but also looking into the future.
50 years is always a hallmark for any organization, but it's what's on the horizon for the next 50.
I think that all of us should celebrate and recognize what we've accomplished, the lives we've changed, we've saved.
How we do that, how we treat our patients, how we treat their families, how we treat our donors, how we treat our staff, how we treat our volunteers. Those values, I can't imagine changing one bit in the next 50 years.
So as you can see, Mercy San Juan has been an extremely proud member of this community for over 50 years. And the exciting part is, was put, said in the video, is it's what is in the future that we're very, very much more excited about. We are, as we, as was said in the video, we are founded, and founded by the Sisters of Mercy, and we still have Sisters of Mercy in our hospital today, working in our hospital, and that is a major part of who we are. We are a unique, and what we consider to be our differentiator in the community is our mission. We are committed to furthering the healing ministry of Jesus Christ. How do we do that? We do that by delivering compassionate, high-quality, affordable health care, but also living out the mission of the sisters by serving and advocating for our brothers and sisters who are poor and disenfranchised, the most vulnerable people in our community. And we partner with And we partner with other people in the community to improve their quality of life. So what I'd like to do today is just briefly, within the next four minutes, go through some of the things that, recognitions and awards we have received, what we do for the community in providing community benefits, who are we partnering with in the community, some of the new initiatives we have, and then ask Dr. Walsh to come up to talk about the clinic of the future. So what are some of the recognitions? The one in the middle and the top is the gold one. We are certified by the Joint Commission for the Accreditation of Hospital Organizations. That allows us to see Medicare and Medicaid patients as a part of the CMS program, and is our good housekeeping seal of approval. As you saw from the video, we are most proud to be recognized by Healthgrades as one of the top 100 best hospitals in the country. And if you think about that, right here in Citrus Heights and Carmichael, one of the top 100 best hospitals in the country, and we have that because of our dedicated physician staff and because of our dedicated nursing and allied health staff. We have a series of other recognitions that you can see up on the board, and that is only a small sampling of the recognition that we have received at Mercy San Juan. But how do we give back? How do we get involved in our community? This past year, we provided over $19 million in patient financial assistance, unreimbursed costs to Medicaid, community health improvement services, and other community benefits, plus over $50 million in unreimbursed costs for the care of patients covered by Medicare. That's part of our mission, and that's part of who we are. Each year, we participate with our communities such as Citrus Heights to identify a community needs and to do a community needs assessment. It's an opportunity for us to really take a look at what the community needs as a hospital, not just what we need, but what does the community need, and work with the community to provide services. And so those services include access to behavioral health services, access to high-quality health care and services, active living and healthy eating programs, disease prevention and management and treatment, safe, crime, and violent-free communities, and basic needs such as food, security, housing, economic security, and education. You may not always think about that as being a part of a hospital, but a hospital is no longer just in the walls of our buildings. It goes beyond that, and it is participating with our community to make sure that we can develop a healthier community in which our patients live. We partner with many different organizations such as Sacramento Covered, TLCS, Turning Point, El Hogar Community Service, to increase the primary care and behavioral health, including substance abuse services for our patients. Many of the patients that come into our emergency need these continued services outside of the hospital and after the ED. We can't provide them, and so we partner with these community organizations to make sure that our patients can continue to get these services outside of the hospital. We also offer workshops and healthier living programs to the community, a few of them listed there, including a matter of balance, a fall prevention class for the elderly to keep them from falling so that they don't get hurt, one of the larger reasons that elderly get hurt in their later years. And so we offer these programs in conjunction with the communities to provide a healthier community in which we live. Just a couple of things that I wanted to talk about in terms of new initiatives at Mercy San Juan. First of all, on February 1st, you may have heard that we are merging, we call it a ministry alignment, with a large company called Catholic Health Initiatives. We are forming a new company called Common Spirit Health. When that merger takes place on February 1st, we will become the largest not-for-profit health care system in the country. Very exciting for us. It gives us an opportunity to not only serve more people, but also to influence health policy and the way health care is delivered in the United States. Other things at Mercy San Juan, with a Board of Director approval next week, we will begin construction of our new 42-bed neonatal intensive care unit on the third floor of the McCauley Tower. This is long overdue and well-needed. Our neonatal intensive care unit is often full, and we need to make sure that it's bigger and state-of-the-art to reach out to those patients. We are partnering with the Sacramento County to open up a crisis stabilization unit in May to properly treat patients on an outpatient basis who have behavioral health diagnosis. This is a major issue in our emergency room, and if you come into our emergency room on any given day, we have several patients who are suffering and need services for behavioral health needs. Once we have approval, we will begin to renovate and improve our emergency department. We have the, one of the busiest emergency rooms in Sacramento County. We see more ambulances at our emergency room than any other hospital in Sacramento County, including UC Davis. And then we're also going, we have implemented a plan to improve the throughput in our emergency room to reduce our length of stay. Some of our growth strategies that we have implemented, we have partnered with Valley Children's out of Fresno to offer 24-hour, seven-day-a-week pediatric hospitalist services. We also began a maternal fetal medicine program with Valley Children's for high-risk moms who are, will be delivering at Mercy San Juan. We created private rooms in all of our, in our family birth center to improve the patient experience at Mercy San Juan, and with a mid-referee program in collaboration with Camellia Women's Health. We started a, we have a very strong, comprehensive stroke program that remains one of the strong programs at Mercy San Juan and allows us to really treat any stroke patient that occurs in the community. And we have several new orthopedic and neurosurgical spine surgeons who are, have now started at Mercy San Juan and are performing minimally invasive spine surgery, something that hasn't been offered in the community at any other facility. More importantly, we want to provide a healing hospital, and that may sound, well, of course, that's what a hospital does, right? But our healing hospital concept goes beyond just physical healing and includes social healing, spiritual healing, psychological healing, emotional healing. And we do that by engaging our front line employees and allowing them to connect with our patients at a much different level so that we can provide that healing. It's a very exciting program, and again, we believe that is the differentiator for us as a system in the Sacramento community. I want to end with this quote by Henry Nowen, "We are all healers who can reach out to offer help. We are all patients in constant need of help. Only this realization keeps professionals from becoming distant technicians and those in need of care from feeling used or manipulated." We want to truly create a healing environment at Mercy San Juan and all of our Dignity facilities, and that is our goal, and that our hope, and our hope that our patients experience that when they come for care at Mercy San Juan. With that, I'd like to invite Jill Walsh to come up and talk a little bit about the status of the clinic on the Greenback, on Greenback.
Hello, how are you guys? Welcome. Thank you so much for inviting us. I know that probably we have just a couple of minutes, so what is my timeframe, just to be able to give you an update?
Take all the time you want.
Okay, well, I won't do that.
Don't listen, don't listen to him.
It's a big building.
Again, for those who don't know me, I'm Dr. Jill Walsh, and I'm going to be the site medical director at our new building just right down the street. Very, very excited about that and have been involved in something we call Care of the Future for the last two years along with my colleague Kirk. So Kirk and I will be in charge of that building. We are very delighted that we've come a long way, and we talked, oh, gosh, I think it was about a year ago, about the concepts of Care of the Future and what that meant for our patients and what that meant for our community. In that building, just to remind everybody, we're going to have primary care, which is going to be our internal medicine doctors, our family practice doctors, and our pediatricians. Embedded in our internal medicine is going to be doctors who specialize in elderly, which is geriatrics, and also palliative care, so we can help those patients who are having a chronic medical problem, eventually they'll die from, help them in their latter years of their life. So that's going to be embedded into our internal medicine floor. So we're all kind of one cohesive unit, and can work together to provide that continuity that our patients need. Right now, we find that so much of that is siloed. Patients get a consult in the hospital, and then they go home, and then, well, what happens to them? Are we communicating with each other? Are the patients feeling like all of their needs are being met? And is the team that's taking care of these patients all working together in unison? And that is our approach at our new site here in Citrus Heights. So we're really excited to be able to do that. Also, in that building is going to be many other subspecialty services that we do need. We're going to have dermatology, we're going to have endocrinology, those who take care of diabetes, and many of our patients will need that. We're going to have pain management and behavioral health. We'll have allergists, and our rheumatologists. And I believe that's, that's it. The list goes on and on. We also will be expanding our services next to Mercy San Juan Hospital, where we have our current building, and we're going to be expanding to fill that space so we can bring more of the subspecialists that are in our downtown location to San Juan so that our patients don't have to drive so far to get the subspecialty services that they need. So we should be able to provide a very comprehensive approach to all subspecialty services that are needed for any patient, where all they have to do is drive a few miles to be able to get those, to get that care. I've told you before in my previous presentation about Care of the Future, it's a different way of providing care. We have a model called On Stage, Off Stage, where patients don't have to experience the loads of boxes that somebody just brought in, the supplies, and everything's going to be, we have greeters, so patients are greeted. They don't have to stand in line and wait for somebody to look up and recognize that they're there, and just a whole different approach to being able to work cohesively as a team and to be able to provide just a slightly different way of practicing medicine. We are also, we have started something called a connection center, which is, everybody knows is the call center, so that when patients call in, that about 95% of the time, their answer is dealt with during that phone call. They don't have to leave a message, they don't have to wait for somebody to call them back, but whatever concern they have is addressed in that first phone call. So those are some of the concepts that we're looking at. We are very excited to be able to have this facility. We would like to be in it today. Unfortunately, that's not possible. It's still a bit of a shell, but we are working on the third floor. We are going to be doing a staggered approach in regards to moving in. We are looking at a target date at this point, in June. It was supposed to be April, but we just really wanted to make sure that we were doing it right, and so that delayed us a few months just to make sure that we had everything in place so that when our patients came, they really felt that we were really doing something special. So June, July, and August is when we're going, moving in, and hope to have everybody in by August and be fully functional. We also are going to have a lab and x-ray there so patients don't have to go over to that San Juan site and have to, you know, leave our facility to get basic tests done. Any questions that any of you might have?
Ready? Go ahead, Brett.
None other than thank you, and, you know, everybody asks about this building all the time.
We're so excited about it.
Yeah, and so it'll be great to have it open when other council members are done with the doctor. I do have, I think, Michael, I have some things to bring up with Michael.
Perfect.
Question, anything? No? Okay. Well, I just want to echo what Brett said, and we are so excited to have you here. It's been fun to watch it, especially now when activity really started taking off, and we are aware of the three-tiered approach of opening floor by floor, but I didn't realize it was going to complete within just a matter of months. I thought there'd be a larger time gap, so I'm glad to hear that. Once you are officially opening, we start seeing activity, it will just be a reminder to us about what a vibrant participant you are in our community, and we just thank you for choosing Citrus Heights.
Well, thank you. We also feel very honored to be doing this, and the nice thing about the concepts that we've developed is that we are going to expand the way that we are going to deliver health care in the concept of Care of the Future to all other Dignity facilities, not only in California, but Nevada and Arizona. So it's going to change the way we practice medicine, and we're certainly very much looking forward to it, and very excited to be partnering with our local hospitals too, because we're, I think, as a team, we're doing really good work and really taking care of our patients the way they deserve to be treated. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Brett, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you very much. I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you and publicly express my appreciation for Mercy San Juan Hospital.
Thank you.
I'm sure that I have had dozens of relatives and friends stay at Mercy San Juan Hospital over the last 40 years, from my grandma 40 years ago to my granddaughter just about a week and a half ago.
Wow.
Stayed in the hospital. And so, and I've always been so impressed with Mercy San Juan Hospital, I consider it to be, for lack of a better term, my favorite hospital. So I just want to really express that appreciation. It has always been a classy place to go to, and as a former deputy sheriff, having gone there maybe, I don't know, probably close to 100 times with somebody under the ER, just the appreciation for the staff and the approach and everything that this hospital has demonstrated, to me at least, for 40 years, is extremely appreciated, and I just wanted to share that. There is a concern that I do have, and that's our homeless population and the impact that it's having on emergency rooms in hospitals. There's, I guess, a law now that requires before you can release a homeless person back into the public that they have to have a specific place to go, a bed in essence. And so obviously, that's going to have a negative impact on what can happen time-wise, and it can start things kind of real, kind of snowballing from, can't clear them out. If you can't clear them out, you can't put anybody else in there until you clear them out. It could be that here comes winter, and best ways to get a couple of days maybe off the streets, especially during that stormy type weather that we just had, might be to start feeling some chest pains that get me over to the hospital, and now I'm in, and I can't be let go until you have a place for me. And then obviously, if that's going on, and that's kind of putting a crimp on what's going on through ER, our law enforcement officers who bring arrestees, who bring 5150s for evaluations and stuff like that are going to be delayed. So here's this snowball of delay. So I did want to get in the weeds just a little bit.
Sure.
And I don't expect you to have an answer to this, but I wanted to ask you anyway, and I'll be extremely impressed if you have answered this answer or to this question. But what is Mercy San Juan doing to assure that because of this issue, this process, all of that, that there is going to be room for the citizens of Citrus Heights, you know, our folks, to get into that area? You know, we also have a very high senior population, which is probably a lot of those ambulance rides, and so, you know, there's just a great concern for that, and I really appreciated the things that you shared, what the hospital has done money-wise and forgiving things and stuff like that. But if you know the answer to that, that's great. I'm just concerned that, again, as the unintended consequences of laws occur, that people from Citrus Heights will be either not able to get in or be delayed to where it has extremely negative impacts. And so if that's something you can answer, that's great. If that's something that's, again, in the weeds too much, I'd like to ask that maybe you have somebody who could come back and talk to us about that.
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you for your comments about Mercy San Juan. I'm relatively new, I've only been here less than two years. The dedication of our medical staff and the dedication of our, of our staff in general is what provides the environment for that healing and for that caring. So I appreciate your business and coming to Mercy San Juan. I tell patients all along, I really don't want to see you in the hospital, but if you have to come to a hospital, we like for it to be Mercy San Juan, so thank you for that. I actually do have an answer for you, but I would leave that open to have some more of the experts come and address that problem. The simple answer is this: the law that was passed with regard to the homeless is really the right thing to do. Unfortunately, Mercy San Juan and the other Dignity facilities have been practicing the right thing to do for a long time, and so the new law, although it will, it may have a little bit of an impact with us, really won't have much of an impact with us because we have been fulfilling that law for a long time. And so along with the other initiatives... And so, along with the other initiatives that we have going on with, in trying to reduce the length of stay in our hospital for patients who really don't need to be here, actively working with social workers and our community partners to place patients in safe environments after they leave the hospital, that's what we do, and that's why it's so important to have community partnerships to do that. And if there are ways that we can partner with the city to help you all help deal with these issues in your community, we are here to help with that. We have the resources and the people who have done this elsewhere, and we want to work with the cities to help to reduce that problem. But I assure you, we will have plenty of room for the citizens of Citrus Heights at Mercy San Juan. We continually look for ways to become more efficient and improve the throughput, both through our emergency room and through our hospital. We are not perfect, but we are continually striving to get better. But getting back to the original question, we have done what the law is asking us to do before it became a law. And so it's just, it's the right thing to do, and we've been doing it for a long time.
Jill?
I just wanted to say a couple of things that are similar to that. A couple of things that we are really looking at from Mercy Medical Group, one of the main groups here in town that's providing care to citizens of this area, is, one of the focuses is looking at something called social determinants of health care, and really trying to focus, if a patient is sick, why are they sick? Do they have social needs that aren't being met, that are causing them to become ill in the first place, and causing them to become hospitalized? And so, we're really pushing, especially with this new clinic, to have embedded social workers and staff who can really go through a checklist to make sure, is a patient safe in their home? Are there transportation problems? Are they not able to get their medications because they can't afford them? And trying to focus on all of those issues, so that we, in one, keep patients out of the hospital in the first place. The other big initiative that we're looking at, there's a pilot right now down in San Francisco, is looking at something called Home Hospital, where a patient can be diverted from the emergency room based on certain criteria, and we actually care for them in their home, and they get fairly intensive care with nursing staff for about three days. Those are patients who are generally there from a one to three-day stay, so we're looking to potentially pilot that up here, so that we can, I mean, who wants to be in the hospital in the first place? There's so many different reasons to not be in the hospital, so how can we keep patients in their home, especially those who aren't critically ill, and that we could provide the same services at home that they might receive in the hospital? So those are some of the kind of the new innovative ways that we're looking at. How do we keep patients out of the hospital? The third thing, and then I'll be done, is something called transition of care. When our patients leave the hospital, do we have a well-formulated plan, so that those patients, that their needs are being met, that they understand the medication that they got, that we address any concerns they may have? And so that as soon as they leave the hospital, they have a contact person, so that who's communicating with them regularly until they see their doctor in the outpatient, for the outpatient appointment, to make sure that their health care doesn't decrease while they're waiting for that appointment. So those are some of the new and innovative things that we're doing to try and improve the health of our patients in general in this community, and kind of keep an eye on how we can do a better job in keeping our patients at home and out of the hospital setting in the first place.
One of the things you might want to do is make the food not as good. I don't know why, but the food at Mercy San Juan Cafeteria is always the best food, so you got to...
Well, that's a challenge for him, then, right? Okay. Anyway, I just wanted to point out those few things, because I think, you know, from you guys to know that those are kind of some of the things we're doing, and then, again, partnering with our community services to really make sure that, a lot of times, you need to not just partner with one community service, but a patient may have four different needs. And so, we're working on a plan to be able to do a referral, so all those different community services that are available, that the patient gets connected with all of them at the same time, so that we can meet their needs. So some new and innovative things coming our way, and I think we'll all be very excited to improve the health of Citrus Heights.
Thank you very much. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next item, please.
The next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Okay. We'll start with you, Brett.
Today, I had the pleasure to return to the Air Board and meet up with old friends, and that was nice and fun. Not a lot of things happened. They did go over the highlights for 2018, and I won't share them all, other than to, basically, it included things such as funds to take out and replace older vehicles that cause higher emissions, tractors, things like that, car sharing programs, bike sharing programs, worked on the light rail systems for development around the rail stations. And then, the, basically, the start of another, another state-mandated requirement without the funds to do it, and that is in regards to an area in South Sacramento. At the same time, we got a little bit of an update on budget, and the growing desire to increase or add fees for everybody. And fees from either DMV fees to, of course, violator fees, but also per capita-type fees. And I found that very disturbing. And, again, this is a regional board, and, you know, air doesn't stop at the Citrus Heights border, you know, and turn into just automatically clean air, so it's a regional effort and whatnot. But the reality of it is, the main gist of the funds that the Air Board puts out goes towards things that do not directly impact Citrus Heights. And I think going back to our citizens on a per capita-type thing and asking for money is wrong, and I'll be fighting that, but I don't know that I would be successful. But, again, this is a good board, this board does a great job and an important job. I'm just disappointed to see that they're looking to increase the funding, and I'm very disappointed, again, to see the state do what they're not supposed to be allowed to do, and that is push mandated things onto us and not have that come with money to take care of that. So that's about it for the board, and, do we have any other things?
Thanks, Brett. Bishop?
So I was able to attend the Legisity's new council members training this past week. It was very informative. I learned a lot of things that I kind of thought I knew. I got two ethics trainings, so, but it was really interesting. I also sit on the Transportation and Communications Board there, so I'm learning a lot about how Citrus Heights can kind of fit into the entire Sacramento kind of region and within the state, and what resources are there, and how we can kind of position ourselves to take advantage of those resources. And that was pretty much all I've done.
Okay. That's a lot, though. Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, Jeanne. We, ago Monday, attended the Regional Transit Board meeting. Nothing much from the meeting to really report on. We did vote on development fees within Sacramento County, revised development fees and how they'd be administered. Do have some news. Light rail service has gone to 15 minutes on weekends to match weekdays. We voted to make the parking at most of the stations once again free. On Saturday, February 2nd, you can ride transit for free to visit the museums, which I believe are open for free on that Saturday. Please go to the sacrt.com website for more information on how to ride this and what museums you can get to. And I thought it was interesting, our federal consultant for regional transit said that the new Congress is considering earmarks once again. So stay tuned for that, or what's fondly called pork. And this Wednesday, I also represented Regional Transit at the Sacramento Black Chamber of Commerce Installation and Business Awards Luncheon, and that was quite fun to attend. We got an email on CERT training, I think went to the city council, and it's for...
I have a note here.
Oh, you do? Okay, I'll let you handle that, then. That's all I have to report.
All right, thanks. I just saw you looking for it, so I thought I'd offer that.
Thank you, rescuing me.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. So, sentation boards have kind of cut back to one meeting a month for the most of this year, so I have nothing new to report there. I did go to the Sunrise Marketplace Board Meeting, and Travis Kimball of the Quick Quack Car Wash is the new chair, after Christie Woodard has served as chair for a number of years. And they approved their new board, and everything else there was pretty much business as usual. Also, had a school two-by-two meeting, which is a committee I sit on representing the city, along with Jeff. And got some interesting statistics about our Public Safety Pathway Program, which is our new program that we have at Mesa Verde High School, which is a direct link between high school education and pathing, a pathway into law enforcement, in part, in large part, to our own police department. And they had 54 students start this brand-new program. Now they are at 47. They have 15 who are in advanced program, 19 who are in an intermediate program, and 13 in an introductory program. And we have interns, you know, the cream of the crop is to come to Citrus Heights and intern with our police department. So we're very pleased with this program. It's inaugural year, and look forward to many years of this growing. And so, looking forward, Steve was talking about Sac Metro Fire's CERT class, which is a four-day class that starts March 7th. It's for the general public, and it's to certify you in various, like CPR, in various forms of medical training. I know a lot of folks have gone through this, and so if you're interested in it, Linda Ford is the person to see, and she's at MF, as in Frank, certbasic@gmail.com. And I'm sure you can get that information from City Hall as well. And then finally, also fire-related, February 8th, which is a Friday, at 8:30 a.m. is the kickoff for this year's Fill the Boot, in the corner of Sunrise and Greenback. Every year, Sac Metro Fire puts this fundraiser on, where you drive by and you put a dollar in the boot. And this fundraiser benefits firefighters, burn institute staff, and volunteers. And so it's funding to provide services for people who are victims of burns, basically. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that our location here in Citrus Heights was the primary initial program location that started this program off many years ago, and we still remain the top fundraiser of all the locations they have in the county. So it's always exciting, so if you drive by, be careful, but make a donation. Thank you. All right. That's all I have. What else do we have? Next item, please.
The next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. And if you wish to address the council, fill out a speaker identification sheet and get it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Thank you. We have three speaker sheets this evening, so we'll start with Jennifer Collins.
Hello, council members, Mayor Jennifer Collins. I just wanted to bring up the concern I have regarding some contracts within our city. As a profession, I work for the state civil service in contracting, so I have a little bit more knowledge than, you know, homeowners, and that have, may have been subject to an incident caused of damages caused by a contractor. And I wanted to let you know that I feel that there is a need for a formal review of your contracts and the management of contracts within the city. The recent handling of a complaint that I filed due to the damages caused by the contractor and the inability to get the answers from several key point issues by staff, and the issues that are of concern would be the performance, compliance, and possible breach of contracts, is, it's been really daunting, excuse me, and it seems really poor business practice, especially being in the word government, and there's, you know, more of a responsibility for government to practice transparency in government. And I hope to have someone to get back with me with my questions and pending answers that I have not received, especially regarding special provision pages and the letter of rejection regarding my claim. And, like I said, my main concern is a possible review of how contracts are managed. So just wanted to let you know that it is something that should be looked into. All right? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carl Dorn.
My name is Carl Dorn. Hello, council members. The purpose of me being up here is really actually pretty brief. I am the new site supervisor at Asian Resources, and just wanted to formally introduce myself that way. You guys know my face. For those who are not familiar with Asian Resources, feel free to give us a call, but I'm sure most of you are acquainted with it, so...
But some people in the audience may not be. If you'd like to just briefly make a statement about your services?
Sure. Yeah, so Asian Resources has three sites in Sacramento. The site that I supervise is predominantly targets refugees. So there's a series of support that we provide for refugees as they transition into the American culture. Things, what may seem simple to us, but just learning English, it's hard to transition effectively and get jobs and get access to different resources if you don't see the language. In addition to that, there are cultures that refugees and immigrants come from. It's a tall order to get used to the American nuances and the different things that helps us all navigate through American life. So some of the folks that work with our agency, they not only are knowledgeable about what it means to support folks through navigating the resources, but they have lived experience in their transition in American culture. So this is day seven for me, so bear with me, but I feel as though that kind of sums it up.
Well, thank you, and welcome.
Of course, thank you.
Good to meet you.
And our final speaker this evening is David Warren.
If I keep this up, I'm going to get a reputation as a gadfly. I'd like to address the issue of homelessness in the community as it applies to medical care. Representative Mercy Hospital gave, I believe, an overly rosy description of the current situation, because in meetings I've had with nursing staff and medical professionals at, from Mercy, as well as several other hospitals, the emergency medicine, medical system is in a state of near collapse due to the homeless problem that has been generated by the new legislation. Patients are being, who are admitted through the ER, are laying there, delaying examination for other patients for hours on end, and at times, they're being admitted to hospital floors for levels of supervision well beyond what is necessary. My experience at Mercy San Juan was horribly different than that was, has been described. I was on, in the telemetry unit, and having walked, and finally having gone back in a normal sinus rhythm, I had the opportunity and the necessity of walking the floor. And as I walked around, I looked into the various patients' rooms on the telemetry floor, the second highest level and expense in a hospital, and saw numerous patients who had no leads attached to their chest, even though the floor was designed for cardiac care. That, also outside their doors, were hired security. While in the emergency room, I saw numerous instances of welfare institutions code 5150s running through the hospital ER, and in one instance, there was a female being chased by a male security officer, saying, "Please put on your clothes," as she ran naked round and around in the Mercy San Juan medical facility ER, in their central facility. I think of the utmost importance that the city council accept the offer of Mercy San Juan, and have them make a presentation as to what they're doing, about how they're handling the homeless population that is inundating Mercy San Juan Hospital. I've made the same request concerning other hospitals in our area to other relevant elected officials. I am fearful that individuals who need medical care will be denied medical care or... will be denied medical care or be forced, because the room is closed, to be transported to a more distant medical facility, which will endanger their lives. This isn't to say that there are some doctors that aren't great, and I'm here to tell you that my, that my experience with the nurses was terrific. But the state statute provides the maximum number of patients per nurse, and I personally observed Mercy San Juan violating that on three separate occasions. In representing and in your duty to protect the members of our community, you should find answers to this question. Puffery does not solve the problem. A direct presentation with appropriate questions is most appropriate from this city council and preparation to obtain specific data as to the overcrowding situation. In closing, I had the unfortunate experience of spending several hours in the ER before they, I was even seen by a physician, even though I was a cardiac case. At the same time, I sat next to two Citrus Heights police officers who were there with a person who was in custody with a spit mask on, who sat there. Those officers were not on patrol. They were not serving our community because they're sitting there waiting to be seen by a physician for the, the person that was in custody. That costs us a lot of money, endangers our community, and the hospital appears not to be addressing it, or if they are addressing it, we better know why those officers were sitting there for such a lengthy period of time. Our community needs to be safe, both for police services and medical services. And if it is true that Mercy San Juan Hospital has one of the highest delivery rates for ambulances, we'd better make sure that when the ambulances arrive, patients can be treated, especially from our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. That ends our public comment this evening, so we'll move on to the next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar items seven and eight.
Are there any questions from the council? Then I'll entertain a motion to move consent.
Move consent.
Second. Thank you. There's a motion and a second to move consent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It carries. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, number nine. The subject is the 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Funding. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution accepting the 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Funds in accordance with state requirements.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor and attending council members. Lieutenant Chris Frye with the Police Department. This evening, staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution accepting the recommended expenditures for the 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, otherwise known as the JAG grant. This will be in the amount of $27,961 and in accordance with the state requirements. The fiscal year 2017 funds must be expended by September thirtieth of 2020. The 2017 JAG grant will be utilized to purchase cameras for the Special Weapons and Tactics Team with our department. There's no matching requirements for the grant money expended. However, the total cost to purchase the cameras is a one-time cost of approximately $48,000. The Police Department intends to expend the special funds from the citizens' option for public safety, otherwise known as the COPS grant, for costs exceeding the grant amount. Equipment purchases will be made in accordance with the city's adopted purchasing policies and procedures. The Police Department applied for the funding grant based on the need to purchase cameras for the SWAT team. The camera system to be purchased are closed-circuit camera systems that allow tactical officers to gain necessary time-sensitive and up-to-date intelligence on potential actions of the suspect and victim, allowing better tactical decision-making by the SWAT command staff. As well, the cameras make it possible to gain necessary information and intelligence on any layout of any structure, potential barricades, and the location of the suspect and the victims. This information and intelligence allows for improved officer safety and the use of appropriate tactics, potentially reducing the need to put people in harm's way. The Police Department is requesting to strategically use grant funds to support the department's equipment initiatives. This request will support our local goal to provide exceptional police services to the community and enhance officer safety. By accepting and using grant funds in this manner, the Police Department will purchase the necessary cameras to assist officers in responding to high-risk calls while increasing officer and citizen safety.
Thank you very much. Janet, do we have any questions? All right. Oh, it's a public hearing. Sorry. Okay, I'm opening this public hearing for any public comment. Anybody wishing to speak, come forward now. Seeing nobody, I'm going to close the public hearing. Call for council comments or a motion.
Welcome.
Everybody?
Well, I, I'm very excited about it. I think this is, again, just another way that we expand our ability to enhance our officer safety. It will also obviously then allow us to offer training that you can't simulate. You know, it's just the real thing. And so I'm very happy to move the item.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. We, I think we all have an easy time voting for this one. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It carries. Thank you very much.
So we have, the next public hearing, number ten, is the 2018 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Funding. And the recommendation is to accept the 2018 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant funds in accordance with state requirements.
And Madam Ma'am, Madam Mayor, we do have a second resolution that we'd like to consider this evening. Our staff is recommending the city council to adopt a resolution accepting the recommended expenditures for the 2018 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, otherwise known as the JAG grant. This will be in the amount of $29,157 in accordance with state requirements. The fiscal year 2018 funds must be expended by September thirtieth of 2021. The 2018 JAG grant will be utilized to purchase riot gear. There is no matching requirements for the grant money expended. However, the total cost to purchase the riot gear suits is a one-time cost of approximately $40,000. The Police Department intends to utilize special funds from the citizens' options for public safety, otherwise known as the COPS fund, and/or department's current budgeted general fund for costs exceeding the grant amount. Equipment purchases will be made in accordance with the city's adopted purchasing policies and procedures. The Police Department applied for funding for this grant based on the need to purchase suits that are up to industry standards and will allow the department's officers to more effectively work with our partner agencies in the event of mutual aid responses to crowd control events. These suits provide additional protection for the officers, allowing them to effectively engage in these events and protect the community. The Police Department is requesting to strategically use grant funds to support the department's equipment initiatives. This request will support our goal to provide exceptional police services to the community and enhance officer safety. By accepting and using grant funds in this manner, the Police Department will purchase the necessary riot suits to assist officers in responding to high-risk calls and mutual aid requests while increasing officer and citizen safety.
Thank you. And I don't think we need further comment on that. I think it all, we all feel the same way, unless you have something additional to say.
I'll just say, the way that you present that is just incredible, okay? Your delivery, you should have some sort of television show, actually. Again, this is something that keeps our officers safe and hopefully, but this, hopefully this stuff goes into the closet and doesn't come out. But it's obviously needed for that time when it, something does happen. So I'll be happy to move this item also.
And Mayor, this is a public hearing as well.
Yeah, I know. I know. So sorry. My fault. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Yes, sir. Did you like, you have something you'd like to say?
I was curious how many officers this would outfit.
Go to the microphone.
Just introduce yourself, please.
Matt Malky. I was curious how many officers this would outfit.
Good question.
So right now, we're currently looking at purchasing approximately thirty different riot suits. It'll be in various sizes for the officers. Obviously, we have officers that are larger, some smaller, so we want to get a good variety and to make sure that the suits are comfortable and they protect the officers.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the public? All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing. And now I will entertain a motion from the council. And we have one from Brett. You still there?
And I agree with Brett as far as, you know, enhancing our officer safety is paramount. I do remember when we got the armored vehicle from the military and just hoped we'd never need it, and actually, we've provided mutual aid with it, and I think we've needed it. But fortunately, it's been mostly for PR. I, I support this and will second this motion. I just hope we never need them here, you know?
All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It carries.
Thank you very much.
Right. Thank you. Okay, now we're done with public hearings. And we'll go to our regular calendar. May I have the next item, please?
The next item, regular calendar item number eleven. The subject is intent to approve an amendment to the contract between the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights and the California Public Employees Retirement System. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution of intention for the amendment to the contract and introduce for a first reading and waive the reading of the entire ordinance, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights and the Board of Administration of CalPERS.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Rhonda Rivera, Assistant City Manager. So the item before you is the resolution of intent to amend the contract with CalPERS. Back in December, council approved a process where our classic, our safety employees, sworn employees in the classic retirement plans implemented a cost sharing. So they're paying three percent towards the employer's contribution to CalPERS. That's already happening. That took effect on December twenty-third. What this item will do is it will amend the current contract that we have with CalPERS to allow that contribution to be pre-tax. And this is, this is just the first step. And so staff would recommend that we follow the recommendation to approve the resolution and waive the reading, and then you'll see it come back before you one more time because it is an ordinance. So you'll see it at the end of February, and then it'll be effective the end of March.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
I don't have any. Anybody? All right. You have a motion? Move approval. Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Middleton. Any second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. It carries. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is department reports, and we have none. The next item is city manager items.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Chris Boyd, the city manager. And we've hired a new economic development manager. I want to introduce her to you and tell you a little bit about her. And her name's Megan Huber. And before I tell you more about her, I, I just want to really remind the, the community really of one of the council's top priority, and that's economic development. You know, we're doubling down. This position, you know, so our, our, this is, we've had this position, and, but I'm moving this position into our office. Megan will work directly with me, and she has a fantastic background. But our focus really is on our businesses, retention, attraction, really, you know, leading and carrying forward our awareness campaign and our initiatives that we've worked so hard to attain. They're the right ones, and we have the right person to do it. So she joins us from the Economic Development Department at the City of Rancho Cordova, where she spearheaded the city's business retention program, retail recruitment efforts, and innovation initiatives. Prior to her time in public service, Megan spent fifteen years in hospitality sales and marketing with companies like Marriott International and Hilton Hotels. She's a graduate of Sacramento State with a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration and Marketing. She holds certifications in sales, advanced communications, and negotiations, and is in the process of obtaining her economic development certification through the International Economic Development Council. Megan has extensive experience creating and executing strategic sales and marketing plans for private and public organizations. Her skills include business development, marketing campaign management, data analytics, community outreach, and public relations. She lives close by in Antelope with her husband, two children, who are eight and six. And I can tell you, we had an extensive process. We had a lot of people apply for this position. And Megan, by far, stood out. We were, I feel very fortunate to be able to land her. She started this week, and she's already in both feet. And she's going to be great, and our business community is going to love her. And, and we're off to a great start already. So I did want to give her an opportunity to say hello. So I wanted to introduce Megan to the council.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm so excited to be here. I'm Erin Bruins and city council members, and Megan Huber, City of Citrus Heights, new economic development manager. Very excited to be here. Chris mentioned my experience, which comes in really handy. But really, where I like to think I set myself apart is in my passion. I love economic development, and I love representing our local community, especially my own community. I have a history in Citrus Heights and know these streets. So I really, really am honored to have the opportunity to continue to advance the city's initiatives and help continue to build our business community. My personal economic development philosophy is that as practitioners, we are brokers and catalysts and facilitators, not only to our current initiatives, but to vision future ones. So I love chewing on ideas, so I want to hear everything. No kid gloves. Please throw me in both hands. And I'm just really excited to be here. I do want to extend a thank you to the City Hall team. Everyone has given me such a warm welcome and has amazing hospitality. So it's off to a great start, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We're delighted to have you. I think the timing on this is perfect. And so we're all poised to push forward with economic development. And we're really happy to have you on the team, Megan.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. We've got this small thing we need you to work on.
Yes. This small thing.
The small mall thing.
Duly noted.
Thank you. Thanks. All right.
And I have one other brief thing. So I think you heard from our city clerk, Amy Van, today that our, our new website is up. And we'll tell you much more about that at the next council meeting. But I do want to thank Amy for her leadership. This is an enormous task. She's been working on this for a long time, and it looks fantastic. So I want everyone to know it's up. Please take a look. And Amy will talk with you more about it at the next meeting.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, please, Amy.
Next item is items requested by council members and future agenda items.
And do we have any items this evening? Mr. Daniels?
Sure, I'll go first. I noticed that we do have some kids in the audience, and I see a Bella Vista shirt back there. But if we could get one of them maybe to come forward and tell us why they're here.
Who's the brave soul?
Well, we got one.
There's the leader.
Good evening.
Hello. My name's Aleah Kirkpatrick, and we're all from Bella Vista from a government class. We're required to attend a meeting and observe and learn just what meetings are about.
Great. Do you have any questions for us?
Not really, no.
We're always happy to have students here. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
And are you with them? Oh, nope. Then you got to come up and tell us why you're here. Why you brought your dad, because he's asking us all these questions.
No, I'm not with them. I'm here for Boy Scouts requirement for an Eagle Required Mirror Badge that I'm working on is to listen to a city council meeting and log all the points from two different sides.
And what is your name?
Ethan Malky.
Hi, I'm Ethan. Welcome tonight. You have any questions for us?
No, I don't.
All right. I'm happy to have you here. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was it too controversial?
All right.
Okay. I, I want to bring up an item that hopefully I can find support from my fellow council members. Obviously, there's a federal government shutdown. There's no secret on that. And federal employees have been furloughed and have now, tomorrow, will reach their second missed checks of income. I know that in my life, if I missed a second check, I wouldn't be living very comfortably. So I want to look and ask us to, to look inside ourselves and see what we can do. And there's not a whole lot we can do. But I want to ask for support to offer loans to our Citrus Heights residents that are working for the federal government and who need those loans. I'd like them to have a $5,000 max. I'd like them to be zero interest. And I'd like them to be repaid within sixty days at the end of the shutdown. That could happen tomorrow. That could happen in a month. We don't know. I'd like to limit it to maybe two hundred applicants and then see the program eliminated at the end of that shutdown. I know that's money, and I know that always makes everybody a little scary. And I did get a chance to talk to the city attorney, but not for very long before our meeting, and I know there's some concerns with that. And so I don't know what we can and cannot do necessarily. But when I look at
And so I don't know what we can and cannot do necessarily, but when I look at this, the other part I see is that if we have these folks in our city who are not receiving income, then they are not spending income in our city too, and so we have a financial, a vested financial interest in doing something like this, because if they're not spending money, that means they're not spending money inside of our Citrus Heights businesses, and those folks are then being also hampered by this shutdown. And so there's this downhill effect of these employees not making any money. I feel that we have the money available. I feel that it meets what the Citrus Heights city is about, and these are taxpayers. These are all workers. These are people who have put their tax dollars into our coffers, and we need to be there for them if we can, and I'm hoping that we can get support again from another council member, and if we do have, if we can get that support, I'm hoping we can come back as early as next week with a special meeting to get this done quickly, because there's no point in delaying, and I don't want to go two more weeks and then come back, and then we have to have some process after that, two weeks to actually get applicants, get checks and stuff like that. So that's where I'm at.
Okay. I'd like to hear from our city attorney.
As council member Daniels pointed out, he did mention this to me briefly around, a little bit before 5:00 today. There are complications with the city, first of all, whether the city could issue loans at all under these circumstances. Secondly, there would be other, if assuming it was legally permissible for the city to do so, then the city would have to come up with a process for guaranteeing repayment, figuring out who gets what. Please understand that when I say that, I am very sympathetic to the plight, I think as everyone in this room is, very sympathetic to the plight of the federal employees who are stuck in the middle in an unfortunate situation.
I think we all feel empathy for our federal employees, regardless of where they live. I just wonder if this is something we can even legally consider because it's public funds, and we're not in the business of loaning money. That's my, those are my initial thoughts.
And you have a good point. There are limitations in the government code that came out of, years and years ago, there were some investments that went bad in Orange County, and so there are certain limitations in the government code on when loans can be made and things like that. Even a loan as small as $5,000. Other loan programs we have are specifically authorized, or that other cities have had, have been authorized by specific statutes. So in answer to your question away from both of you, I'm, I do question whether it's legally permissible. I certainly have not had the time to give a definitive yes or no to that question.
What I'd like to ask you to do is to do your due diligence on this and get back to us, please. Thank you.
I think part of that due diligence, too, because it is a concern, I think, of all of us, is other resources that are available. Are there credit unions loaning money? Are there banks loaning money to their members? I believe they are. I just, I'm not in that predicament. I've gone through that type of predicament, lost a job through cancer, and boy, your savings go fast. I don't care if you put away five months. When it's a year ordeal, it's pretty tough, and I did find resources and thankfully had a supportive family. They got me through it, so I'd like to see, as we're looking at this, if we can't do it, if we can at least get on our website, resources available to folks that live in Citrus Heights that are out of work. I'm even more concerned, because I think the employees will get repaid eventually. It's your consultants and yourself employed that they won't see anything, but yes, we've got TSA workers here that work at the airport, and they're working essentially free, so whatever we can do to get information out, too, I think would be helpful.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, it's definitely worth looking into, in my opinion. I would hate to see someone in Citrus Heights lose their home or, you know, not be able to make car payments or childcare, that kind of thing, so I think it's critical that we find out whatever resources are out there. So I agree with my council members, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. You agree with what?
I agree with you all, yes.
Okay, all right. All right. Any other council comments? All right, do we have anything else, Amy? Then we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.